Welcome to the November 7th Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. I will handle the prayer and the pledge tonight if you don't mind bowing with me. Father, I thank you for this night, the chance that we get to come together, that we get to make decisions that'll be in the betterment of our city. Lord, we want to lift up a group tonight. We want to thank you for the veterans, those that have fought their families for the sacrifices that they all have made for us to even be able to sit here tonight, that we can have dialogue and we don't have to worry about going home and worry about someone knocking on our door, that we can't, that we shouldn't have done, had a discussion, that we get to be able to live in a free country and there are men and women who've sacrificed their lives for us to be able to do that. Lord, I thank you for our staff, thank you for the men and women who protect our city every single day. Let's make decisions that are in your light, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask this, as we don't have any ceremonial items tonight, but we did have Mr. Baines came at, came up and spoke at our public comment section, and I know Mr. Baines has his Korean War hat on, but if there are any veterans in the audience, would you mind standing up? Ms. Russell? Mr. Baines? Thank you for your service. We do have veterans events all over, Veterans Day events all over our city, starting on Monday. I know there's an event at 11 o'clock that's on the square that happens every single year. All right, well, moving to our consent agenda, we need to pull number two off of the consent agenda and that's going to be moved down to number 16 later in our agenda. So if you have any questions for item one through 10, except number two.
If there are no questions, I'll move for approval.
With the exception of number two.
Yes.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into land use matters. We have ordinance 19OZ 36 to amend the marketplace at Savannah Ridge, PUD, along Shelbyville Pike, second and final reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item 12, 19OZ 37, rezoning approximately 26.2 acres along Cherry Lane, second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 19OZ 38, a plan of services annexation and zoning for property located along Asbury Lane.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
No.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I would have, I have one comment. Mr. Huddleston wanted to ask, and with the acceptance of council, you know, we've talked about the traffic issues on Asbury Lane and Asbury Road, Wilkinson Pike, for quite some time. We had a plan in place three or four years ago to talk about how we could upgrade those roads, knowing that we just met today with a development that would be looking to come at the 80 acres on Medical Center Parkway, knowing what we have going on Asbury Lane, and really looking at the overall area. I wanted to ask if staff would sit down and reach out to the property owner in that area to rediscuss what we as a council had talked about on the road network in that area, and then report back to us where we are for the council to start that discussion.
We'll do that.
All right, move to new business. Ordinance 19O35, Murfreesboro Water Resource Board Compensation.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity tonight. What you have before you this evening is ordinance 19O35, which would adjust, is requesting to amend the Murfreesboro Water Resource Department Board members' compensation from $100 per meeting to $300 per meeting. The board members have not had a compensation change since 2000, and this would put them in line with the compensation of the power board, who have similar commitments of time, effort, and expertise. So we would request your approval. This fee increase has actually been accounted for in the budget.
Can I ask which board members are on the council? Who's this affect?
Madeline and Kurt.
Madeline and Kurt, okay. No, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, now, there he is.
I mean, if it would've been Bill, I got no problem whatsoever.
Sometimes you don't know what answer to a question, and you ask it, and you're...
Just to clarify, is this for official board members or for anybody that attends the meeting?
This is for official. We'll have snacks for ex officios.
Because you was a back.
Let me make, let me make a motion for approval, because I like those people. All of them.
That's not why you made the motion.
No, that's not. No, it's not, but...
You really like me, Eddie.
I like everybody.
I'm a second.
Motion is second.
Didn't walk, didn't walk.
Yes.
Who was it?
Motion names.
Madeline.
Madeline's seconded.
No, 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 I did. I did.
Madeline should've seconded.
Right.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Stand.
Mr. LaLance.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Shacklet.
Yes.
Mr. Smotherman.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Stand.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Had to say it, didn't you?
I feel like we need to adjourn after that. All right, we'll move into land use matters. We have recommendations to schedule public hearings. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, and good evening, Mayor McFarland, and members of council. Our recommendation tonight is actually to reschedule a public hearing that was scheduled at our last meeting for the Hidden River Estates PRD zoning located on Casey and Trail, Eastview Drive, and Racket Club Drive. The day after we scheduled that public hearing for December the 5th, the engineer for the, for the applicant reached out, said that he had a prior obligation, that he was not going to be able to attend that meeting, and the applicant said that he wants his engineer there as an important part of the design team to be able to answer questions that the council may have. So the applicant contacted us and requested that we reschedule that public hearing. The only, really the only other possible date in 2019 that we could schedule it for would be December the 19th. That gets closer to Christmas, but that's an option, or if we wanted to push it out to January, a Thursday in January, that would be an option too, whatever the council's pleasure is for that.
What would be the first meeting in January that we could have?
It's kind of an odd schedule, so I would look to Mr. Tyndall to see when our work session that, that might be.
I would anticipate probably the first meeting being the 9th. The first Thursday in January is the 2nd. That's, that's pretty tough. So probably be the 9th, and we may move workshop then in January to the 15th.
Not sure I could be here on the 19th, is why I was, and I'd like to be here for that.
Is it, is it likely we would, oh, you're not sure on the 19th in December?
Having the middle of December.
There's no date in the middle of December?
The 11th is the workshop. I bet.
Mm-hmm. The 11th, the 11th would be a workshop. So the 5th and 19th, and the 26th, 26th would be a holiday.
The, the 5th is the day that it's already scheduled for, and they said that, that just simply won't work, work for them, and so that leaves the 19th.
What about the 19th?
It's the 5th. He says he can't be here on 19th.
Okay. Did you get any indication of whether or not they would prefer to just get it on the 5th or wait six weeks?
No, yeah, and before I brought this to you, I asked Mr. Burns, the applicant, that do you, do you want to leave it on the 5th, or, or do you want your engineer to be there? And he said, I want my engineer to be there, I want it rescheduled, so...
Let's look on out past that in January, then. I mean, what's, the next one would be the 23rd or something?
I think probably the 9th. Oh, further in January? The 23rd, yeah.
Well, is the 9th? Is there a problem with the 9th?
It's the 19th of December.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's December, so the 9th of January.
9th of January?
Yeah, that's likely it would be our early meeting too, though, right?
Uh, we'd probably bump that to the 15th.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm... Yeah, I'm dealing with 5th. I'm sorry to, is, was the 5th the one where we had a number, a pretty, a long list, or was it a different day?
We had six public hearings scheduled for the 5th, including, including this one right here, and so that would leave us with five scheduled for the, for the 5th of December.
We didn't expect much on those five, is that right?
That's correct.
Then did you say he had a conflict with an engineer or something?
Yeah, Mr. Bill Huddleston, his engineer, who, who has done the bulk of his work on, on traffic analysis, which, as you know, will be a big point of discussion at the meeting, Mr. Huddleston had a prior obligation and is not able to attend the meeting on the 5th, and that's why they've asked to, to reschedule the, the public hearing. Mr. Burns would like Mr. Huddleston to be present.
If everyone can be here, I'll move that we have it on the 9th of January.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade. Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you. I'll do want to let you know, I'll be sure to relay that to the leadership of the neighborhood group, so that there's no confusion about, about the date of the public hearing.
How much of that has already gone out, Matthew? I mean, is, is there, has there been anything that's come out from us via Facebook or anything like that?
No.
Other than us voting on the scheduling it?
Not, not from, not from the city, and I know that Ms. Rush in our office has actually already been in contact with, with kind of the leader of the Facebook group of the neighborhood, and so they're already aware that the date is going to be changing. I think she may have already pushed that out to the, to the residents. So they do a fantastic job in that, in that neighborhood of, of having a social media presence and, and spreading the word, and, but I'll make sure that they get that word. In fact, this evening, I'll send an email to her, and, and I'm sure she'll push that out to her, to her residents.
And I'm sorry, this, because it just didn't occur to me until you mentioned it, but, um, I, you know, this makes me not want to change it around a little bit. I guess I just voted for it, but I didn't really think about the fact that, that we had already, you know, that residents had already been notified, and...
Well, there's been, there's been no, no official notice from the city. None of our legal notices have been, have gone out, none of our mailouts have gone out. Any kind of notification would have occurred via the neighbors themselves.
Yeah, we kind of notified them when we voted on it and scheduled it the first time, right? I mean, that was my thought process.
Yes, sir.
We voted on it, scheduled it, and I don't, I don't want this to be any more confusing for the residents, and, you know, I mean, but...
I'm just struggling with one engineer for somebody saying...
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of...
Everybody changed your schedule. I mean...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, I understand, we, we voted on it, though, so...
Aye.
January 9th, I think, unless we want to go back and, and it'd be tough to do that. Nah, it's all right, I mean, it's no... I just don't like, I don't like December 19th, because I think it's an awful date, less than a week before Christmas, to ask people when there's company parties and Christmas or program events and things that are going on that, you know, anyone who has a family's going to have something going on during that time period, so, you know.
Okay. It's all right.
All right, let's move on to Affordable Housing Program, Community Development, 511 East Sevier Street.
Mr. Huddleston.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, members of council. I have for you tonight, one, two items under community development. The first one is for down payment assistance for a home being constructed at 511 East Sevier Street. We are in the process of helping prepare for the loan closing. This was anticipated in our community development program budget. We'll assist with $10,000 for a new home there that's valued at $175,000. Funds will come from the community development program, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. I recommend your approval.
Any questions for Mr. Huddleston?
If not, someone...
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this a property, I am trying to recollect the email I received, asking a question where this is a home going next to another home that's already up?
Yes.
I got, I received an email, and it was on, I thought, East Sevier, and I meant to follow up with this, and I apologize, but saying that the people next to this house, that their driveway has been taken away and they're parking on the street. Is that the one?
No, it's not that far.
It's another one? Okay. Thank you. Aye.
Aye. Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
The mayor also, to cover the item we removed from the consent agenda, which is the Habitat for Humanity Subrecipient Agreement. Ms. Terry Schultz with Habitat for Humanity is in the audience with us today, she's available for any questions. During our five-year development of our Year Five Action Plan, we identified off-site sewer project in coordination with a low and moderate income subdivision proposed by Habitat, known as Legacy Point, that's on Twin Oaks Drive. We identified off-site sewer improvements as something that the community development program could participate in to promote low and moderate income housing in Murfreesboro. We have identified and budgeted $200,000 tonight before you as approval of the subrecipient agreement and the funding of this community development program, and I recommend your approval and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. Both Ms. Schultz and I would be able to answer any questions about this project.
Any questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. And we'll move into reimbursement for use of personal, personal automobile on city business handbook, section 1014. Ms. Russell?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Staff is requesting revisions to employee handbook 1014, reimbursement of use of personal, personal automobile on city business be approved. The previous policy imposed specific insurance requirements on employees before they could be reimbursed. Those requirements were unnecessary and burdensome. The updated policy removes those specific requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll move for approval if there's no questions.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Just, just one comment to make sure that we, in the, in the line four of, I just, this includes the city manager and assistant city managers in that. Is that, it is? No, I think this is...
No, you're right. That's that one.
It's line four.
Yeah, line, four in the policy, we'll amend that second line to include the administrative staff through assistant department directors, so that would include city manager, assistant city manager.
I'll, in my motion to include those amendments, to include them.
Right. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to a repeal of employee handbook section 1026, Use of City-Owned Vehicles.
Staff's requesting employee handbook 1026, Use of City-owned Vehicles be repealed. In 1995, this policy was adopted to reimburse employees up to $40 a year for the cost of a rider on their personal insurance for non-owned vehicle automobile liability insurance. The city's current coverage and modern insurance practices make the rider ineffective, therefore their reimbursements are no longer required.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Russell. All right, we have updated employee handbook section 4001, Safety and Health Protection on the Job.
Staff is requesting approval to update employee handbook section 4001, Safety and Health Protection on the Job. The city has developed an occupational safety and health program that encompasses all safety procedures and processes. It's also being recommended that the following safety policies be repealed, because all pertinent information in these policies reside in the Occupational Safety and Health Program. They include section 4002 through 4006, section 4009, and section 4011 through section 4013. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. All right, we'll move into Veterans Ride Free on Rover.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. With Veterans Day just a few days away, you have before you an opportunity to honor our veterans with free transportation onboard the Rover bus system. In September this year, to resolve an issue we were experiencing with our tickets and transition to the new fare system, we allowed veterans to ride free that month, and it turned out to be a much welcomed and appreciated effort on our part that the veterans really enjoyed. As a result, we inquired with Nashville RTA and Franklin Transit System on their programs and learned that they're providing free transportation to veterans year-round. Despite the clear difference in size of operations for RTA versus Murfreesboro, we learned that Murfreesboro has a much higher veteran participation in our transit system than RTA does. This, of course, is mostly due to the VA hospital being located here. We are requesting the city approve a Veterans Ride Free Pilot Program for the months of November and December to further evaluate the effects on fare revenue. Our estimates, based on the number of veteran rides that we had in the month of September, showed the fiscal impact would result in about $1,000 of less fare revenue collected per month, or $12,000 annually. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Who's gonna monitor, I mean, who's gonna, how are they, how are the drivers gonna know that they're a veteran? I mean, what's the...
So we require them to have proof of that, so they have a card that they can show that, that they're a veteran. Some of them have like a service-related card, others have, it's a different form of ID.
Military ID?
But they do have an ID that, that they can show, so we, we did require that during the month of September.
So just the drivers will have to check that every time they walk on? I guess I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, and, and it's not that big of a deal. We do that now with, with the riders that qualify for half fare. They just have to show their ID that, that validates that they are of age to qualify for that half fare, and it, it's not, not anything that's a hindrance on our operation. And the veterans, of course, they're, they're more than happy to provide that information if they're going to get a free ride, so...
Can I, can I ask, if, if we're estimating $1,000 a month, knowing where we are with the budget, I mean, why make this a pilot program? Why just not go ahead and make it a full-out program and move on with it?
That's what's going to be my comment.
And if you would like to do that, it's your discretion, I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think this is a segment of our community that we overlook sometimes, not on purpose necessarily, but they served us 365, 24/7, so I think that's a great idea. And if no other discussions, I move for approval of the full year.
Permanent.
Permanent, I'm sorry. Permanent.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I would still like to have it tracked, so we have the numbers relate to that, so how many we, you know...
Yeah, we, we have a, a special key that we have set up on our fare box system that they'll use each time. That's...
Could we just make a note to have maybe a quarterly, come back every quarter and give us a, an update on where we are? And then, you know, if we need to make adjustments, I'm...
Absolutely.
I feel confident if it's a program that is, is successful as we hope it is, then maybe there's the opportunity we go out to individuals in the community who may want to help with that, if we start seeing it's costing us too much. to help with that, if we start seeing it's costing us too much. I will say for the staff members who are sitting in the audience, let this be note that this is one time that someone got more than what they asked for, and for y'all not to think that that happens on multiple occasions, so. And with, speaking of more than what we asked for. Mr. Core. Waste, wastewater, mechanical, electric services task order number 1911. Cue the PowerPoint.
No PowerPoint.
Oh, man.
This is just a, we have three high-service pumps at the water plant, they're 700 horsepower pumps, very large. They operate off variable frequency drives so that we can adjust the speed at which they put water out. We had those three scheduled to be replaced as part of our, just replacement schedule for FY '21. One of those has, has failed in FY '20, so we are asking for the, the replacement of the VFD plus the labor to install it at $287,497. The replacement, or the repair cost is around $240,000. So this is really, it's the end of the, of its useful life, and it's not worthy of repair, and we had it scheduled, so we're just asking, instead of using this as an emergency repair, we, we had it, it worked out so I could bring it to council and request your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Core.
Thank you.
All right, we have, any beer permits?